Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
We don't see Councilwoman Latham here yet. Phil, she'll probably join us. Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you the humblest way we know how, come about his and humble hearts, God, thanking you for another day. Ask you a continued blessings upon us as we continue to lead our city, God. We need your wisdom, your insight, your understanding. We just act that continuous prayers for unity within our nation, within our states and cities, God. We thank you for our mayor, Mayor Ford, and the city council, and every department head. So we thank you for what you assign our hands to do. We give you praise, we give you glory, we give you honor. We ask it all in Jesus' name, and all that agree, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session in council meetings held on September 9th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 5th through the 11th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. I believe we have any this morning. We do have some special guests, though, that we'd like to recognize. This is representatives of the Lights On for After School event. Ms. Janie Bone is here this morning. She's the Director of the 21st Century Program for Gadsden City Schools. Superintendent Keith Blackwell is not here this morning. He's on the list. And Craig Scott and Hannah Gray from the Gadsden Public Library are with us. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Yes, Craig Scott, Gadsden Public Library. And Mr. President, council members, you might recall, a few weeks ago, I was in front of you about a big event coming up at the library, October 21st, and it was kind of a save the date, quick little announcement about it. But I'll have Janie now tell you more about the event.
Wonderful.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Craig. And thank you for having me today and letting me speak. So I've stood before you guys before, and I appreciate your support for Gadsden City Schools and for our after-school programs. And so I just want to quickly go over what Lights On for After School is, what it means, and what it represents, because I'm certain you guys are dying to know this morning.
Yes.
Okay? So on behalf of Gadsden City Schools, I'd like to invite you to our Lights On celebration on October 21st, in partnership with our very good friends at the Gadsden Public Library. And let me tell you, it's going to be a good one. So what is Lights On? It's a national celebration where communities across America come together to shine a light on after-school, to show why it matters and why it's important to keep the lights on for those programs. It's about highlighting the students who grow through them, the families who depend on them, and the community partners who help make them possible. This event is led by the After School Alliance in Washington, DC. This year, I've had the privilege of traveling to DC several times to share our after-school story, to tell about our kids, our families, the little boy who lit up solving a STEM project, the girl who found her confidence stepping on a stage to perform a play in after-school, the high school student who received a college scholarship, families who tell us how much they need the programs. And one of our very own students was featured on the front page of the Washington Post this summer. This year, the After School Alliance has chosen to highlight our celebration right here in Gadsden. It's kind of a big deal to the after-school world. Okay, you guys clap. And so on October 21st, you'll see it for yourselves, the STEM projects, student showcases, a guest reader from the Challenger Center, we'll have a trunk-or-treat arcade, and of course, our incredible community partners. I just want to take a moment to brag on Craig and Hannah and the library staff. They always go above and beyond. They have became family. I believe you can have a partner on paper, but that's not the type of partner I want. I believe a partner should be a real partner. It shouldn't be on paper, and that's what they are. They aren't a partner on paper. They are family to me. So, thank you. I will close with this. After-school is about more than homework help and a safe space. It's about building futures. It's about kids discovering their gifts, gaining confidence, and knowing their community believes in them. When we keep the lights on in after-school programs, we're lighting up possibility for our students and for our families. So with all that pressure, you should join us on October 21st and come celebrate, and let's light up Gadsden together. I do also want to throw in a shameless plug while I'm standing here, which is, we are still looking for a few people to host the trunk-or-treats on the night of October 21st. So we've added a much bigger element this year, and we're going to have trunk-or-treats at the park right there at the library, only about 10 trucks. And there's a Google form that you can fill out. You can look on Facebook. I can, you know, send it, email it to any of you guys. But we're just looking for some people to sponsor those trunk-or-treat events so that our kids can circle through the activities that's so close to Halloween, and we just thought it would be a fun thing to do. And also, lastly, I want to invite you on October 23rd, as a city, to celebrate after-school by going blue. And that just means that you wear blue to celebrate after-school. There's lots of challenges online. It's a very large-scale, national event. They'll light up the Empire State Building blue. Usher did a big thing in Times Square last year for it. And so I would love for you guys to wear blue on the 23rd. That's the Go Blue date. And if we have anything here in Gadsden that we could light up in blue, that would be great as well. And I just want to say again, thank you, and I want to thank my team at Gadsden City for always supporting all the things that we do, Superintendent Blackwell, Ms. Menez, Mr. Bazza, and all the central office staff. And again, I want to thank you guys, because anytime we need to get something out, you're willing to let us stand up here. So, thank you, thank you. And as any person who is trying to entice people to come to an event, I did bring some cookies for you guys today, okay? And so I'm going to present those to you, and also I have a save-the-date flag. But the cookies are just in the shapes of the lightbulb, which is what we use on the national level to celebrate after-school. And so I hope you enjoy them, and I want you to know that, you know, we really appreciate you. This is a great event, and now more than ever, it's important to show what you're doing in after-school. And we have 1,200 students who are in after-school here in Gadsden, Alabama. I believe around 100,000 who are in after-school in Alabama. It's needed, and everyone needs it. And so thank you for your support, and I just ask that you continue to support us.
Ms. Bone, September 23rd or October?
October. Did I say September?
October 23rd, all right.
I probably did.
No, I just, there was a lot of dates, and I can only remember maybe one at a time.
October 21st. And I have heard that there is the Sunset Sips that same day, but...
Is it really?
I'm hoping we have a different audience, you know?
I was going to ask Michael Rogers if he could get with the mayor's office to see if we might could do the monument down here by Miranda Park, you know, turn it on blue for that day, so.
Is October childhood domesticized?
Yeah.
And suicide.
I'm going to turn your microphone on. There you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's a great report, and I would agree, it's a, the program is much needed. It's an obvious, obvious need in our, in every community, but in our community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Craig, and thank you for being here, and thank you, Hannah. Thank you for being here this morning. All right. Well, at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the recess, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to reconvene.
Okay. Item 10 is where we are. It's unfinished business. We have none today. Item 11 is a resolution requesting the city attorney to write for the opinion of the Attorney General of the State of Alabama. This relates to interpretation of Alabama Code 36-21-55, Section 1, regarding disciplinary actions that must be reported to the law enforcement officer employment database of APOST, which is Alabama Police Officers Standards Training Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good luck. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing community policing agreement with the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. This continues a longstanding agreement regarding the seven public housing facilities. The Housing Authority will reimburse the hourly salary of four police officers during fiscal year 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Clerk, is there any discussion? Excuse me. Any comments, discussion? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is new business. I believe we have one item today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I'm trying to multitask over here, and I failed miserably.
Oh, no.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is from the Public Affairs Department. This is appointing members to the Gadsden City Youth Council. Remi Adavenport from District 1 and Laura Bella Brown from District 5 will be appointed, and they will, these terms will expire no later than July 31st annually. For those who aren't familiar, this is just something that the mayor's office and the council put together under this new administration to try to engage young people in this community in the, in the leadership process, in the government process. So this is the, again, the Gadsden City Youth Council, and we appreciate these young people for stepping up. So if there's no objection, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have. I'm going to enjoy my cookie now.
Okay. Thanks, Councilman Wilson. All right. Item 14, department reports, committees and boards. I know we have Ray Wetzel, the Gadsden Museum of Art Director, is with us this morning. He's going to tell us about our beautiful murals and Arttoberfest. Good morning, Ray.
Good morning, guys.
Welcome.
I know I don't do this much, come talk to you guys, but if you notice, they're finishing up the mural that's right outside of the city hall now, and I just want to thank the people who helped pay for that, the Edwall Extension Office, through SnapEd and Auburn University helped pay for that with Tori Ennis and Mitch Carter. We're going to be doing murals all over the city next year. We're hoping to branch out into other districts. I've got plans to move into Alabama City starting as soon as possible. We're going to be painting on the side of the Ritz that'll go along with the renovation. It'll, you know, not to give too much information, but it'll kind of brand it so you can see it from the road. And I'm, the big thing, the, so there's, next to the museum, there's an alleyway that leads to Blackstone, and so Huntsville, Alabama, has what's called a color walk, and it's lights shining on murals and paint, you know, like small paintings that the kids and everything have done. And so what I want to do is take this area, have students come paint a mural on a retaining wall, and then really make it an entrance, like a mid entrance to Broad Street, that we can use through First Friday, and just kind of increase our, our mobility and everything like that, and keep people in Gadsden to look at the artwork that's, because this summer, from May to July, the museum saw over 13,000 patrons, and that's through summer camps, that's through all the programs that Tom at Cultural Arts Center and I have done. But also going along with this will be signage and maps that'll go along Broad Street that'll indicate where all the businesses are on one side, like an old-school mall kiosk on one side, and the other side will be a map where you can walk trails to see all the artwork in Gadsden. And it'll also include Naklula Falls, the murals that we're going to do in Alabama City, the sculptures we're going to be adding. But I just want to make sure you guys know that, even though I don't come talk to you guys, there's a bunch of projects going on that hopefully you guys can enjoy for a long time. I remember being a kid, and there being murals all over Gadsden, like the old one, the, in East Gadsden, that was behind the Sonic of Bear Bryant, and then the cars crashing into Ed's foreign car parts.
Yeah.
I really want to bring that back, because it was, you know, exciting as a kid. But Arttoberfest, so October 16th, from 5 to 9, we're going to shut down Wall Street. It's going to be a giant party. There's going to be tons of food trucks. There's going to be a beer garden. There's going to be, Gadsden State Show Band's going to be performing, DDC's going to be performing, Theater of Gadsden will be performing, and it's open and free to all the community. So I don't know about the beer, but everything else will be. But if you guys have any questions or anything about what I'm doing, just let me know.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ray?
I have a question, but Ray, there's a floral boutique on Megan Boulevard where the gentleman, we highlighted him with the glow-in-the-dark piece that he did, or fluorescent piece that he did. Do you have his contact info?
Yes, I have his contact information.
I just wanted to make sure you had it, because he's, he's very creative, and then, of course, he does pieces all around the US. Also, on 11th Street, just a block off Megan, we've got a business owner that has kind of, we've encouraged, as it relates to the murals and things of that nature. So he's getting his building graffiti, and they're started on it. So I have the contact information to that young lady I want to get to you.
Yeah, please do. So the, the pieces of artwork that are on the art walk is not just stuff that the museum is doing, it's stuff that, like, the, the mural on the side of the building on Megan will be done, that'll be included, so it'll all be a part. I don't want to be a gatekeeper to this thing, but there will be, there will be a process that you have to go through, through Tracy's, Tracy Cordell's office, just to make sure we can kind of control, because as crazy as it sounds, all these murals are going in strategic places. Like if you, like if you go to the fourth floor of city hall and you look out the window, the thought is this building, when we move to the new city hall, will be a hotel or condo or something like that, and to attract businesses, to make the view lines as beautiful as possible. So if you go to the fourth floor and look out, all the murals kind of line up, except for the Stall Market mural. And that's because that was a dirty parking lot, where, you know, concrete was all messed up, and so I wanted to beautify that area, and so this will continue on to kind of clean up. So anybody that's concerned about me painting on a historic building or anything like that, that's not the case. We're working with the city. We're working with K-More to do them in very strategic places. So I'm just not throwing paint on a building. But going back to what you were saying about the artists that we ask to do these things, there's a list of about 200 to 300 artists that are wanting to come here and do things. It costs a very, depending on the artist, it typically costs $25 a square foot to do these murals, and it's not as easy as just putting paint on the wall. We have to seal them, because we don't want them to peel off the wall within two years. And so I'm trying to give everybody a space to create here without it looking too jumbled. And so the people that we're doing is just, we're kind of proposal by proposal. Like I'll say, I'll have this wall, this is the theme that we want to do, and then the artist will submit to keep it as fair as possible. But I'm trying to not use the same artist twice unless it's a utilitarian thing, that's, there's a sign painter in town that's doing really good work. He did the back of the museum, and he'll be doing like some signage for us, but other than that, I don't want to repeat mural artist, to give it as unique a view as possible. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just two quick comments. Number one, in the event that anyone from the ABC board is watching this, the beer will not be free.
Thank you.
You will have to pay for it, and an ID will be required. Number two, I just want to throw it out there, you and I talked about it briefly, Ray, but I think we should wrap the round facade of the Cultural Arts Center with LED lights, like Times Square, make it look like a big LED screen.
I can't speak for Tom, but I do have a plan that I want to present to him that will include something like that.
Awesome.
But that's Tom's decision, that's not my decision.
Oh, of course, of course. I just think, as we talk about the overall artistic design and motif of the city and the feel of it, I think it would be really cool to kind of have like a Times Square vibe going with that big, you know, rounded facade. So get on Tom, and I'll follow up with him as well.
Okay. Good idea. I like that.
Yeah, just great job. Enjoy every bit of it. It's awesome.
It is a great job, Ray. Thanks, just bringing downtown, making it very vibrant. Thank you.
Also, Ray, next time, bring cookies.
All right, we'll move to item 15.
It's a citizen request to speak. We have Ms. Dolores Sullivan is going to come speak to us this week about animal and Good morning, Ms. Sullivan, and welcome, and thank you for your patience with us. For our records, if you'll give us your home address, please, ma'am.
I live at 722 Brookside Drive, Gadsden, Alabama.
Yes, ma'am.
35901.
All right.
Okay, and I'm here today concerning the old General Time Plant, and it is adjacent to the back of my property, and it is overgrown, and I have some things here that, for the past two years, we've made several complaints, and the property really needs to be addressed. We're having rodents, and I mean big rats, roaches, snakes, all is coming into my property, and I'm having to deal with those things. I have a big garden, so they're eating my products and stuff out of my garden. And we have roots growing that are strangling my trees, you know, I have like, well, I had a lot of, what do you call the white trees? Anyway, most of those have been strangled and gone, so that's pulling from my property. So, you know, animals come over there, and I'm shooting, probably from the hills behind us, look like coyotes and different stuff like that, they're hanging over there. We've got people coming in the property, leaving trash, even throwing it over on our side. And because, you know, the building is, you know, body's there, so people are using it, I guess homeless people or whatever. And it's just become a big problem, and we just need the people that owns the property to take care of that, because I'm paying money out, and it's not, you know, I don't have that kind of money, but I'm having to use it to try to keep my property up to date. And if I could, I would get that off the back, but it's over on their side. And I just need, you know, for them to kind of keep it up and help me from having to spend so much in trying to keep, you know, things on my side together. And the stream behind there is kind of built up, so when it rains, it's sinking the right side of my property over the fence where, you know, animals can come in and out. And then I, you know, try to keep my dog in, but he can slide under there and get out. So it's just quite a bit of problems to address that need to be taken care of, and I've spoken to them before, and, you know, little things have been done, but it's not been taken care of, and I would appreciate it if it would be.
All right. Well, we appreciate your concerns, and thank you for coming today, and we'll make sure the building department is aware of these issues, which would come under their responsibilities. So we'll make sure that they know this.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thanks for coming back. All right, that's our citizen request for today. Now we'll go to remarks by mayor and council. Councilwoman Latham, we've picked on Councilman Robinson. He's been begging me not to go first, so.
I really don't have any remarks today, President Back.
Okay.
Thank the concerned constituent for coming and sharing her concerns about the property that's causing her problems.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as well, we appreciate the speaker coming today. We want to address any issue in any district in our city, whether it's a problem, of course, this particular building in question. I do have video footage of the entire perimeter that has been cleaned and sent to city hall department, and far as I know, was satisfactory. I've never seen any animals, except the three that this councilman have told us about, that we can't catch, the dogs. I would love to see any picture of any animal, rat, roach, dog, anything on that property. But feel free to ride up 8th Street, if you'd like to, and look down the side, you'll see any overgrowth is coming from the residents over onto our property. But the entire fence line is clean. I have that video on my phone. Anyone who would like us to see it can have it. But we thank you for the concern, because we do want to address any concern in the city that we have, since this one was brought up. My wife keep thousands of dollars worth of decoration in there, and we've never seen any rat dropping, any evidence of rodents or anything, but we just want to kind of address that since it was brought up today. Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the council and the mayor's office.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, just to kind of address what you stated for Ms. Sullivan, council president, to do, just, just to be, I guess, to have clarity and to give sight on it. Ms. Sullivan, on last Monday, met with the building department, had a meeting. That meeting was well addressed with what the issue is. According to the city code, and, and it can be verified by our building director, according to the city code, the building is a nuisance, and that's according to the city code. This was addressed, again, with the meeting on Monday that Ms. Sullivan had with the building director. And what, what are some of those issues? According to the building code, there's broken windows, there's roof issues, and the overgrown has been addressed, which, at least on the visible side. Again, what Ms. Sullivan is directing us to is the perimeters of the northern side that, that butts up to at least, I think, six or seven homes that are on, on that path, on that fence line pathway. I've been out there, I've, I've taken the pictures, videos, we've had drone footage to, to help give sight on what their issues are, and it is an issue. However, I also have had community meetings, and again, to bring, bring it to the building department to make, and fair and reasonable issue is that the same thing that we asked our residents to do, our commercial owners to do, as it relates to their property, is the same thing that we're asking simply with this, 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 this building to do, to address just those coded issues. And so what we'll do, we'll ask what those coded issues are as it relates to the visible issues from the street, so that this community, again, can have some ease as it relates to the issue that they have been dealing with for quite some time, when it comes to that particular property. There is another property at the intersection that is an issue as well. So it's not, I want, what I want to make clear is that I know it's, it's been a statement that we're picking on this property. No, we're actually coming, we're, we're picking on every property in the community as relates residential and commercial in our community that is a nuisance, that has been sitting there, no matter how long it's been sitting there. Property value is at stake, community growth is at stake, and what we want to do... Property value is at stake, community growth is at stake, and what we want to do, I have been a thorn in probably the building department's flesh as it relates to tabling properties because my goal is to see what we can do to, to help them be sustained, i.e., Owens Manor on 6 and Megan, the corner of 6 and Megan. I was there, thorn in their flesh, and not having this property demoed because it's a historical site, and so on and so on. And so, very similar to here, if we had an idea, a vision of what was going, what's going to happen to the building, things of that nature, so that we can help promote it, and, and, and whatever the case may be, that will be helpful. But we don't know, it is sitting there, it's a nuisance. We're great, you have surrounding facilities that have been bought, homes that has been bought, that have been upgraded, church that is across the street that has also bought an old school, that has also done work to that school and that property. These are complaining members that have a legitimate account and that also, again, with a issue that is against the city code. So, I'm glad Ms. Sullivan came, there was others to at least give other bodies, extra bodies to, of course, my rhetoric, because it seems sometimes I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking for personal account, and it's not, I represent a community, and so therefore, but we, we want to also work with our community, whether they're owners, residents, or whatever the case may be, so that, again, we can bring up the value in our community. We deserve it. Our community deserve it. And so that helps as, as we in this grow Gadsden mindset and plan and whatnot. Growing Gadsden just not means grow downtown or grow, certainly, it means to grow Gadsden our entire community as much as possible. And so as District 3 representative, that is my goal as it relates for District 3. And so, again, appreciative of that. Moving on, we want to do a save the date for District 3. Want to thank Ashley Goggins and the partners in play, which will be later announced. On October the 18th, just want to kind of give, again, a save the date, it's going to be a yoga and sip, and this sip won't be wine, somebody mentioned that, it's going to be coffee. And so we're promoting community health, wellness, and mental health. And we'll be at Carver Square. We have a yoga instructor, please bring your mats and all of those yoga things. And so this is something that we want to highlight in our community as we prepare for our next event. I see Mr. Lacy Robinson in, in the audience, I haven't met with him yet, but Mr. Robinson used to run in a lot of marathons in Atlanta. And so we want to get together and see if we can get Mr. Robinson to host a run there within our community in District 3, again, promoting health, wellness, and, and physical fitness in our community. All are welcome to this event, but again, we just wanted to highlight some things that we're doing in District 3. This is one. Again, December the 18th, we'll get back with you at a time, we're going to look at a morning time, but hopefully the weather will be at least semi-warm so that we can be outside and kind of just really taking in the energy and the vibrance of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Mr. President. Thank you for the cookies, Ms. Bowen.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Minot?
I just want to thank Ray Wetzel and all that you're doing for promoting the art in our community. And this, it's not a coincidence, I don't think, that you're here today because this week is National Arts and Education Week. So, we, we just appreciate everything that you're doing and pretty excited about the murals and that work. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
I'll stick with the art theme. It's Art on the Rocks at Noculula Falls this weekend. That's Saturday and Sunday, September 20th and 21st, I think, the Art on the Rocks start opening, the gates open at 8:00 or 9:00. And we're also incorporating that Wine Festival this year, so that'll be on September 20th. I think those gates open around 2:00. So, come up and enjoy some art, some wine, walk around, pick up some stuff, have a good time, it's going to be good weather.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I want to thank everybody for being here today. Ms. Sullivan, thank you for coming to speak. We'll hear from the building department. The way that the process works is that if there's any infractions and nuisance and abatements, the things that has to emanate from the building department, then we have a monthly nuisance and abatement hearing. And then this, that's when that comes to the council, to this body, and then that's when we're prompted to take action on anything that would come from the building department, okay? But we're glad to hear from you. Welcome to come back anytime, okay? All right, thank you. I don't have anything else to say. Want everybody to have a great week today. Let me remind everybody, today is Gadsden State Community College's 100th birthday. We have an institution of higher learning in our community that's been here 100 years, and every day, they play a more vital part in our community for the whole county than ever before. There's a $30 million advanced manufacturing technology center over there. There are companies that are willing to pay tuition for students to go there and learn and get a certification for a trade, so you can go work for those companies. If you are listening, and if you hear of somebody that you know in your family, a neighbor, you're a church friend, at any age, that needs a job, wants a career, not a job, but a career, please implore them to go to Gadsden State. They have assessment tests that'll find out what are you good at? What are you naturally, what did the Lord give you that, that you're good at? And there's a, probably a program for that at Gadsden State, and there's more than likely a company that wants to hire you. You just have to go do the, the work. So, we need you to do that, and we're so blessed to have a community college in our city. Every city wants a river, a community college, a waterfall, mountains, y'all, we've got it all. The Lord has given it to us right here in Gadsden, Alabama. We need our students in high school, you, they have dual enrollment, you can get over there, you can leave high school already, working, making money, and have a career right there at, at the, you're at the footsteps of the rest of your life. And it's all right over here at Gadsden State Community College. So, happy birthday to Gadsden State. The program today starts at 1:30. Encourage everybody to, to go to Gadsden State. With that being said, we will be adjourned. Thank you.